Order on Monday, October 18th, 2021 is 6:31. Is there anybody that has a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
Nope.
No. I would like to make a couple changes. The first one is, after the minutes, we have to vote on the purchase of a shed because it is on one of the warrants and we found out that we talked about it but never officially voted on it.
Correct.
And it will be on the warrant, so we've got to do that first. Also, when we get down to DPW, I would like to add also, there are some auction items that we want to auction off. And you've been shown that list, so that is also going to be part of DPW, okay? I don't think there's any other changes. So, let's start in with the minutes. We have minutes from October 4th. I don't see who was here. Usually they're printed at the top. I think we're on October 4th. Okay, we're all here.
I was away there. I was out there today.
Okay.
Was at the wedding.
Yeah, that's right. Joe, Joe, you were here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October 4th as printed.
So moved.
Second.
We have by Ken, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried, 500. We now want to vote on the shed. It's probably buried down in here someplace. Casella. We have a purchase order, purchase and sale agreement with Casella for $4,000 for the shed that was, they built or brought in for Greggy.
Yeah, they built it during COVID. We required them to build a shed for Greggy so they could be separated.
Wouldn't have to be together. And they're offering to sell it to us for $4,000. We're going to use it for
The swap shed.
This will become the swap shed. Okay?
So moved.
Second.
By Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 500. Should I sign this one?
I'll sign it.
You will sign it. Okay. So, that goes down to him. Now we can do warrants. I have a payroll warrant, number eight, for $23,423.49.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Check it.
Second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 500. What's this one for?
That's the Beamer's. It's the retirement payment.
Retirement, okay then. So, really, is it a payroll or?
It is payroll.
It is payroll?
It is payroll, yeah.
No, it's a separate.
It's a separate warrant.
Okay.
There are four of them a year.
Yep, okay.
Retirement warrant.
Yeah, retirement. Yeah, okay. Retirement warrant for $12,854.93. So I have a motion by Tony.
Check it.
Second by Ken. So this is a retirement warrant. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 500. Very gentleman to pick this up. I have check warrant number 11 for $95,47.06.
So moved.
Check it.
Moved by Tony, second by Ken. Items over 1,000. A&amp;K Agro Services for hauling gravel, $1,800. Bennington County BCBS. What's that?
What was that?
BCBS.
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay, Blue Cross. Maybe I'll get that straight someday. $7,300. BearCom.
That's radio equipment for, that was for the DPW. Added some equipment onto the trucks.
$1,200, $1,800. What do we got? Bennington County shares for $1,300. The Rescue Squad, $25,000. That's what we voted for.
And that's actually last year's payment because they never sent us a bill. And during the audit, it was discovered they never sent us the bill. And I don't pay things unless I get a bill, so. But it's all last year's budget.
Yep, okay. What do we got? Some technologies, Cartographic Technologies for $2,400.
That's our mapping systems.
Yep, okay. GABO Fuels for $1,000. Innovative Services for $3,300, $3,700. Jerome Construction, $1,400. Must have hired them for something else.
That was Twitchell Hill, right?
Why is it $1,400?
Well, that's the bill you gave me.
It was only supposed to be for a thousand.
Okay, $1,435. KAS Incorporated, $11,545.
That's the spring groundwater testing.
And New England Municipal Resources, $5,000.
Ms. Nimick, that was to this is security program, basically, that they have to have a place.
Cirkumor Landscaping, that's one of his payments, $2,083. TAM, $8,500. Wallingford Crush, those are still Barney, $1,800. Must be for some gravel. Daily for $1,000. And Campbell Wilmington, oh, that's our
Attorneys.
Attorneys, $1,300. I didn't see the $4,000 for the
Yeah, I noticed that. I'll have to check them, see. Joe's on this afternoon.
Did I know? Did I miss that?
We had an awful lot of bills. No, I don't think you did because you would have noticed it.
I don't see a $4,000. It was $4,000.
Well, we'll get another warrant together then.
We haven't voted though. We voted on it.
We voted on it now. So now it's official. We can buy it, so.
Okay.
It must not have been in the stack I gave Joe.
Any discussion?
Was that, you said something about radio equipment. Was that, they put a radio in the backhoe or something?
For the BearCom?
From who?
BearCom, $1,800.
We used Wells.
Oh, BearCom, that must have been the fire department then. Sorry, that's why you guys were in Wells. BearCom's in the fire department.
We did have Wells come and do a service on all the radios and a new install on something, but they're coming Monday for the escrow here.
They're going to put one in the escrow?
Did they come and put it? They came and did it and installed. Oh, no. The new radio they put in and one that we just purchased last winter had problems. They were coming to play that. That's what they did.
Okay, is that under warranty or?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Any discussion on any of this?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 500. Maybe something. Yes, I've got the agenda. We won't lose that. We'll be here half the night.
Does that bill for TAM for $8,500, what time period is that for?
That's one month. That's actually fairly good for us. That is everything from every charge that we receive for them hauling things out of the transfer station. We're actually doing pretty well at the moment.
That's everything.
Yeah. And when we get the larger containers, we'll trim part of that off.
They haven't got the larger yet?
No, they're like everything on the planet. They're backward in the year, which is good because we don't have the ramps yet either, so the timing will come out right. But they told me the lead time for the new containers was going to be at least six months. So, it's like everything, everything is a wait these days.
But historically, we're a little bit less than what we normally would be.
I think we're pretty much on track because so much was rolled into the management contract. It's hard to be sure, but it looks pretty good so far that we're doing all right.
Okay. Any announcements? Anybody got any announcements or anything for the public? I don't have any other than that we are always looking for people to fill positions on the Planning Commission and the DRB. I think there's two positions on both of, on each of them. Public comments? Anybody on Zoom or anything?
Nope.
Melanie?
Melanie, they have handouts because we're having an error with my thing linking up to this separate computer, so there's a copy for you.
Okay, let's look at the cash flow first. You can see the big number that jumps out is taxes received this month is over $600,000. $230,000 of that was just today, so things are picking up. The other big number is the highway state aid. That's a quarterly payment that comes in. It's a little higher than it has been in the past because there's a little bit of COVID money in there.
Yeah, they're spreading a little of that money around to us.
Yeah. Transfer station, another $2,000, almost all in $1 bills.
You need a money counter, don't you?
I do. I know, I got my folding machine. I'm still
Can you convert?
They're very tidy dollar bills.
The only other interesting thing on here is way, way at the bottom. I think I promised this at the last meeting that I was going to keep track of tax dollars received this year versus same date last year. Well, you can see we look like we're quite a bit ahead of last year, but on the other hand, I did just process $230,000, so that's it looks like a lot, but that could really just be one good day. So, it looks like we're certainly not doing worse than last year. We might be doing a little bit better. Because I'm accepting payments in person now. Unfortunately, I'm getting a lot of cash payments again, which was the one good thing about COVID was the no cash payments. But we're getting cash payments again. Which is too bad. Means more trips to the bank for me. I think that's it about the cash flow. Anybody have any questions about anything on this sheet? I don't, you know, I don't look versus budget at this in the middle of the month because you tell them the month is closed, so that's why that is not on there.
We just want to reiterate, taxes are due?
Taxes are due. Get them in the mail if you're going to mail them. If there were be, I would pay online because you get an instant receipt that way and you don't have to say, but I don't get my mail anymore, which is, we're all in the same boat. I would, I strongly recommend if you can pay online, do for your own peace of mind.
If you didn't get a bill, you have to get in touch with us.
Didn't get a bill, give me a call. Let's see, there was something else that, oh yeah, and if I send you a revised bill, please, please tell your bank if you've got an escrow account. I had a call, I actually processed a payment today. It was a one check that had about 40 payments in it. And one of those payments within that check was off because the person forgot to tell their bank and they overpaid by, you know how I always have to process all these? And I happen to know the bank this time, so I called her and said, just so you know, you paid $700 too much. And she wanted the refund instantly. And I said, if you don't pay it to the bank, and it's going to cause such a headache for one of our residents, so please, I write you a letter for a reason when I send you up revised bills. Let your bank know. That's probably the most important letter I write every year is, please tell your bank. It's such a headache for you if you don't. I just want to reiterate that. And there's a bunch of people got in their home state declarations very late. I just processed another 10 today, so that's 10 more tax bills that are going out with revisions that your bank needs to know about. Any questions about any of that? Can I help the reserve?
Ken, can you, someone pass her a reserve? I didn't make an economic reserve.
Yeah, there's nothing going on. I don't even, I don't think I have anything to say. Yeah, no, I don't have anything to say. It's just water. The big number in the debits for water, the $4,800 was just money owed to the general fund, so that was just transferring that back to her. Any questions about any of that stuff?
Thank you very much. The last meeting, we voted to have the cemetery committee set up job descriptions for two different things that used to be covered by one. We are now having somebody that is going to be responsible for the actual physical being out there, making sure the brush is cut back and everything is taken care of. And then we're going to have somebody that is more in charge of researching the plots, selling the plots, being available and all that sort of stuff, so. And we approved that because they were interviewing somebody the very next day. That person is Jean Holly?
Yeah.
Jean Holly. And so I guess we are here to approve that. That she was a select, she was selected and approved by the
By the committee.
Committee, but we have to approve it officially.
Yeah, you have to have the final approval. She's actually, I was approved last week. We had three applicants. We interviewed three people and chose 10 out of the applicants. Of course, we're in somewhat dire need. She has already started. So we're kind of asking your permission after we've already started, but we actually had several funerals in the interim, so
Yep.
We just had to keep moving.
Working out okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, entertain, let's have an entertaining motion and if there's any discussion. But only, Ken made a motion that we we approve the appointment of Jean Holly to the cemetery as one of the cemetery
As the cemetery superintendent.
As a cemetery superintendent, okay?
Second.
Got a second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 500. Okay? The next is a list of regulations, rules and regulations governing the cemetery. This is the, this is the right one?
Yes.
Don't know if you want to I don't see any point in going through them line by line because this is all approved and put out by the cemetery committee. We asked them. They're volunteers. They do this. And this is their recommendation. I can't see micromanaging it. If somebody has any comments?
They will say they spent a long period of time going through these. Of course, you know, it's stretched out because of COVID too, but this wasn't done quickly. This was actually completed and nearly thrown out and started again. And so this is the final product. So a lot of a lot of effort went into trying to get this to work out.
And we actually have a price, pricing schedule on the back?
Yep. And it lists all the cemeteries also.
Well done.
They put a lot of time into it.
So, I guess we need a motion that we accept the rules and regulations put forward by the cemetery commission.
So moved.
Motion by Ken.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 500.
We need each to sign on the third page, I believe it is. Yes, third page.
Tells me where to sign, huh?
It was very efficient.
Make sure you sign in the right spot, okay?
The whole thing's in bound if you sign it.
Do I spell that with two sevens?
I brought your pen again there, thank you.
Mike, you're up. Will you make sure those are on the website?
Yes, we're going to have them all changed over as soon as they're approved, yeah.
The Vermont statue outlines the responsibilities of this board. And it's several pages. And the very, one of the pages talks about right of ways. And it's very explicit as to what a right of way is, the size of it and all that sort of stuff. The right of way of each highway and trail shall be three rods, unless otherwise so on and so forth. So three rods is about over 49 feet. So half of that is 24 feet. And what? Oh, it's more than that. It's about
Three quarters.
Nine, .9.
Is that one rod, like six and a half?
Yes, 16 and a half.
16 and six.
I thought it was six and a half.
Six and a half, 16 and a half.
One rod.
One rod. And all roads are three rods. Okay. Yep. So, and the width, that's to be measured from the center of the traveled portion of the road. And anybody that, so therefore you're, from this traveled portion of the road, 24 feet, almost 25 feet is the right of way. And within that right of way, if anybody builds or creates an obstacle or anything else like that, it specifically says they have to come before the board to have it approved.
Yes, they need what they call a permit from the board to do anything in the right of way.
Anything built within that 24 feet, almost 25 feet. And this isn't happening. And so, I think we've got to, I mean, it's very clear. I mean, it's state and state statute. It's not something we're coming up with or something like that.
See, you're talking about from the center of the road.
From the center of the road, from the traveled, traveled portion of the center of the road. Mike needs something, when he sees somebody setting a fence post or a fence on the edge of the road, he needs something to look at. You've got to go before the board and that sort of stuff, so. Unless somebody else has some other thing, I think he needs
Authority?
Well, he has the authority.
Right.
But he just, I just don't want people saying, oh, you don't know what you're talking about. I think if we create a letter or something
Some backing, you know.
Oh, we're behind you 100%, but yes.
Well, what I can do is I can just write up something based on this as just a standard statement that would allow Mike to fill in the address and the thing when you measure off, because we already have three things to talk about right now. So if you measure those off and say that they're, just make sure, measure first that they're in the right, okay? And we'll just send the letters out that the obstructions have to be removed pending approval of the select board. And each person would have to come in. The permit is very vague, but they would have to come before the select board and apply to do these things.
This way, if there is damage or something, we're not liable.
Well, that's why I want to get a few of these done before winter because one little project that took place recently has posed literally on the edge of the grass. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, they're all going to get whacked in the winter, so.
I have another problem on Donovan, too.
Okay, well, there's another one. So, let's get them out. If the board wants, I'll work something up. Mike can just mail them to each one. We might even do these registered mail. We'll talk about it. Just so no one can say they didn't receive it.
That's right. And if you, you know, if you see something or something like that, you can handle it. We wouldn't be liable even if they didn't get the letter. I mean, there's no liability for us at all.
You just can't drop things in the right of way and say it's okay. But there's one thing, you just want to, it's much better if they have prior notification.
Now, in that state, write up also, isn't there something with the selectmen duties in there?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, this is one of the selectmen duties.
And that's what I was going to get at.
Yes.
So, actually, any of us could go up and settle that with a person in person.
Yeah, normally by selectmen duties, I mean for you to delegate it to someone because all boards are part-time. And when you have the form and things to do things, that's normally the way it is, but of course you can do it yourselves too. Welcome to it. I don't think Mike will object much, to tell you the truth.
People have the misconception that their property line goes to the edge of the road. I own that. In reality, unless your deed is quite specific, and not many of them are, everybody owns to the center of the road. Your neighbor owns from one to the center. You own to the center of the road legally. But the state is very specific. They say, then we're giving you the town the right of way over both neighbors. And and it says that we have the authority to do anything in that right of way. So people may not be aware of that.
Some aren't, some are.
Yeah.
I thought some of the roads were two rods. Of two, that, not many.
There are some roads, and it's been upheld by the state courts, that if you go back to the deed records, it's very specific as to with the road. It's actually in a deed. As Art just said, most roads have no mention. It's just a right of way. And all right of ways in the state are three rods. But if there are parts where it specifically says this is a two-rod road.
In some cases, a trail, even a trail, a legal trail is a three-rod road too, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's like everything. It's just, the travel portion of a two-lane road is like 16 feet, so you know, you don't make a three-rod wide road, but it stole the right of way.
Yes.
And trails are overgrown, but it stole three rods all the way through.
Are there like surveyors' markers or can roads can kind of drift over time?
Roads do drift.
Roads drift. And the state has upheld that too.
So the road drifts closer to you, it's still
Yep, it's the traveled portion of the road. You can't say the road moved a little bit, therefore you got to move it back.
So watch where the grade is going. This keeps moving near away.
What I meant by liable was those fence posts, the plow and the wing is going to
Yes.
You know, when we get a snow up there, we're going to potentially damage them. That's why I just, I don't want, because I know it's going to happen. Because you could be plowing along and all of a sudden just have to move over just a little bit because there's a car coming and they're gone.
They don't have any legal action against us, but you're right, if they know ahead of time that they can't, they can't try to go through the process.
And my issue is from the other point of view that we've observed this obstruction And my issue is from the other point of view, that we've observed this obstruction in the roadway, and we have to make a legal notification to them that this is an illegal obstruction, and prove it, which is why I like to be turning seed, it's kind of like a zoning violation, so that when somebody, because the ones we're talking about on East Road are like on the edge of the grass, and they just need to go, because someone will, it wouldn't take much to drift and take one of those out and who knows, cause an accident, so we have to put them on notice that they're putting obstruction in the road. They have no, no legal right to do that, so.
Hopefully it won't come that we have to take it down, but that we.
That's certainly possible, we may have to.
We may have to. Okay, so, um, is there just consensus, or do you, would you like?
No, I think by consensus, I'll create a form that'll have certain blank sections in it, so that Mike can do the addresses, what he comes across, and general description of what the obstruction is, whether it's these little fence posts that we're talking about on East Road, or the one on Dunham, or, you know, there's, there's a few right now. Uh, there, there's also some that have been there for ages, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we're almost past doing anything about them, but we have to stop new ones from going in.
Some of them are permanent too.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a good, good situation.
Quickly.
Yeah.
We're gonna be plowing and moving them.
That's all right.
So, everybody agree that we'll come up with something, we may, at the next meeting, you may have it, or just, you're just gonna create it?
Well, I can create it and get it to Mike, you might have someone looking for a permit at the next meeting.
Okay, or even before next meeting.
Yeah, or an attorney.
Right? Okay. Yep.
See if the board doesn't object, I'll just get the form out and we'll just get it going.
Okay, with that. Uh, next on the agenda, you gave us a list of things you'd like to auction off.
Right.
Right. Some of them I hung on to from the last auction, because I wasn't sure if we were gonna use them or not.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't touched them since, so, no sense of storing them, and I'll just, I'll start at the bottom, work my way out.
Okay.
Because that's the way he's got it listed. The forks for the loader, they're just, they were, there was a loader purchase that was a forklift, it got sold, they're auctioned.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, so we're not talking about the ones we got from, uh, a couple of years ago, you're talking about the old things for the John Deere back here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, those are mine, I could use those forks.
Well, that's what I was wondering why they were on there, oh, I didn't even know those other ones were still around, oh, okay.
They're a bag.
Okay.
Around somewhere, somewhere. Um, JCB Auger, that was off for the JCB backhoe they had before the Caterpillar that we had. We had no use for that.
Okay.
Um, talking to the auction guy, they can bring in a thousand plus.
Yep, okay.
The poly tank is tired. It's a tank that was at, in the old cold storage barn here. It's not worth saving.
Okay.
We don't use it for anything now, right?
So, you're just gonna junk it?
No, I want to auction it. It's not worth anything to us.
Okay, yeah, because when you said it wasn't worth anything, I'm going, okay, so what's its value, so?
To, to us, it's probably out of date to be using, because it's sat in the sun, those poly tanks only have, um, a homeowner or somebody, people that bid on these, they can do whatever they want with it, but I, the auction, I showed it to Auction International, and he said, no, put it on there, so. To us, it's no good, but to somebody else, it could be. Um, there's an old one-way plow, and it was for the grader, and we are using a different plow for the grader now. We have no use for that plow, probably bring a thousand plus. The trackless is the old trackless, not the one that we bought.
Yeah.
It was, it, it, I saved it because we have an MT five trackless. There's no, none of the parts are interchangeable, the motors are different, there's so many things that are different on it, so it's, it's not worth anything to us. Um, plus, it's in really bad shape, but I don't want to auction that. There's a water tank, and the reason it's separate is, um, the guy from Auction International said, don't put them together, because you'll get a few bucks, you know, a hundred, two hundred bucks for that tank, or if you put it with the trackless, you're not gonna get anything, so. The John Deere mower with the side boom is that old tractor that the town has had for a very long time. I'm told it's, could bring ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Are you absolutely sure you're gonna get a new one?
I am not sure we're gonna get a new one. I really, Mike, would like to hold on to that until we have a delivery, because right now, things are being held up for a circuit board.
I don't want to use it anymore.
Well, you may have to.
Every time we use it, it dies.
Well, we may have to if this new tractor doesn't come.
What do you mean it dies?
It's just, it's, there's hydraulic lines on it that are deteriorated, there's the bar that runs the mower part is all bent.
So, it breaks down?
Breaks down every time. The back, the two back tires are like on the verge of blowing. It's time to go.
The bell's not even showing yet.
Get some duct tape.
How long?
I mean, why don't you think we're gonna get a mower?
Well, the same reason a lot of people aren't getting a lot of things they've ordered, you know, cert, with the supply chain so messed up. Yeah.
We don't, I've used it, we've used it twice this year, and it's costed us money. Blew a tire, and then the last time I had, dived out in it, blew a four hundred dollar hydraulic line, and I'm done putting money into it.
Okay.
All right, I guess we get ten thousand for it, we can find another one to rent somewhere, if need be.
Yeah, you know, fifteen?
That wouldn't make it to mow, like, yeah, we, we, if we don't get a mower, we're gonna have to schedule the rent.
Well, what else can go wrong with it? Not really.
The other hydraulic line that's next to that, they're both the same.
Yeah, well, you know, I asked that about a Ford five fifty a few years ago, and it turned into quite a fiasco.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I mean.
Somebody wants to keep it, but I.
It's a standard drive transmission.
Has no cab. It's the, you run that thing in the summer, it's like a million degrees in there, because all the heat comes in from the transmission, everything, the big hydraulic tank that runs the, the hoes right here. It's just, nah, it's nineteen eighty-one, it's time.
You weren't saying that in January.
You're not more much grass in January.
Yeah.
So, I, unless.
So, is it, so if we go with the new one, you're talking a CVT transmission?
Yeah, that's what we ordered.
Yeah, we've already ordered it.
Yeah, this, this thing, this thing is just a standard trans, you have to slip the clutch constantly, we're all.
He thinks we can get fifteen grand for it.
Yep.
That's what they said, ten to fifteen. He said they're bringing in big money right now.
I mean. We can park that money, if, if a lot of them backed up, we'll just rent one for the spring.
Okay.
I mean, if it moves, if it moves, it's worth money.
It moves right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just feel like right now, we can get something for it, where if we use it another, we might be putting money into it.
Yeah.
Clutch could go or something, you don't know, I mean.
Yep, okay.
The top one is a international dump truck that was purchased before me. I had no use for that truck. I'd like to get something for it while we can. There's another one that we keep putting a lot of money into, and every time.
That was a stopgap purchase, just when all the trucks were broken that winter.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, we got that from, it really wasn't expected to be around this long, to tell you the truth.
But I think that can bring in ten plus thousand too.
Almost what we paid for it.
It's got a plow, I mean, it runs.
Yeah.
It's just not worth to keep.
It came from a schoolyard.
Came from, uh, yeah, a school over New York State, plowed parking lots.
Oh, parking lots.
Yeah.
It was like a nun or something that plowed it.
We've had that boy for three or four years now.
It was treated pretty rough too, but.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it was, it was, it was not handled nicely.
Okay, so.
I, the, um, Auctions International has all this, and all I have to do is give them the okay, and he'll put it on the, um, website. Now, if you remember that, if we don't like any of the bids, we can reject them too, you don't have to accept them.
I guess who do we leave that up to? You?
Last time you guys did leave it up to me, and then.
What's the least amount you think we can be happy with?
With some, with what, like tractor?
Yeah, like the tractor.
I'd say eight, five hundred bucks.
So, don't go below eighty-five, and so you're gonna set a limit with the auctioneer and just let him know?
He says he doesn't, they don't typically set limits on that, and I've looked at them before, but we could set limits, he said, but he said typically you don't have to.
Is it like competitive bidding, or are they?
Yeah, yeah, that's actually the same company that we put the building on.
We've been using them for a number of things.
Yeah, and people wait until the last minute.
All right.
Like, it'll be like an hour left, and then all of a sudden, you'll see them just go.
Yeah, like eBay?
Yeah, if they want it.
What did the building, just out of curiosity, what did the building bring in there?
Sixty-five hundred?
Yeah, something like that. Taken down, which is even more amazing.
Right.
We actually made money getting rid of that building, which I actually never thought would happen.
Yeah.
I can't see putting any minimums, these are all junk to begin with.
Well, they're fine antiques, let's not.
I, I would just.
Yeah?
Let them go.
Let them go.
This foolishness.
They're just taking up space.
So, I guess we better make a motion, because this is.
You better make a motion to allow Mike to put these on for auction, yes.
So moved, second.
Okay, Ken, uh, second by Tony, any discussion? We're gonna, all these are gonna go, no minimum bids, okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, Carrie, five zero zero. And then the last thing, although, is, now we're talking about equipment, this came to us, this is, uh, surplus vehicles and equipment?
I don't know, I don't have that.
It ended up in my.
That was like the second page of the.
Yep.
Oh.
Spreadsheet.
Oh, let me see that.
That must have been something that, that they sent, this has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
I saw that on here too.
Not unless you want to bid on something, huh?
Yeah.
Is any of that stuff?
I don't know what.
There's a Mercedes Unimog in here.
I sent Amy an email this morning, and then I'm like.
They got their place.
Sheet two. I click on sheet two, and I'm like, well, this must be.
And this is from October of twenty nineteen, so.
Okay.
So, that's nothing, that has nothing to do with us.
All right.
Yeah, that auction's over.
A little out of date.
Missed it by a year.
Okay, very good. So, lignosulfate. Um, we talked about it, uh, at the last meeting, and Ken had a lot of questions. Uh, I, I think it's a better product, uh, for the environment. Um, magnesium sulfate can be very corrosive and so on and so forth, but Mike also has a lot of, uh, thoughts on it, and so we better listen to him.
We tried, uh, how do you say it?
Magnesium sulfate.
Now, ligno.
Oh, the lignosulfate.
They call it Safe Bind.
Yep, lignosulfate, which is a, is a byproduct from the pulp industry.
Yep.
It's got a smell to it, but it really holds, but.
Well, right now, we, we have, we, we're with Innovative, and we use magnesium.
So, magnesium chloride.
Magnesium chloride. That's, I mean, that's what we're using now from them.
Yep.
From them.
Probably a little bit safer than calcium chloride.
Yes.
What about sodium chloride?
No.
That's salt.
That's salt.
That's right.
We use that for winter time.
Well, that way you can prep, prep the roads for the winter, and keep the dust down at the same time.
And, so we've been using magnesium now for three years, and we tried this product, Safe Bind, this summer. I got like twenty-five hundred gallons of it, I think it was, maybe twenty-three, something like that. Um, I got it, and it rained, and it rained, and it rained, and it rained, and it sat in a truck in a tank for two to three weeks, because we didn't do any grading, and I didn't know that this, this product actually needs, when it sits, it needs a tank agitator, and when I went to utilize it, it just turned right to foam, and it went right up out of the top of the tank, all over the place, and even pumping it to fill the truck again, it just went to foam. And, so applying it was, was not fun at all, I made a huge mess. Um, I, for working wise, I think it worked fine, I think it worked good. It does cost more money than the magnesium chloride. It's, it's like a dollar thirty-three a gallon, where Mag is eighty-four cents a gallon. And with this company, I went on to their website, because a while ago, I looked at it too, when you first told me about it, I was like, well, I wonder if they are like innovative, do they supply the tanks, the spray systems, all those products, and do they warranty their, their tanks and all this stuff? Well, no, if we switch to this company, we have to buy all new tanks. With Innovative, right now, our contract that we have with them is up in January, but speaking with their salesman, all it is, is we just, you know, I'm reading through this, we just renew it for another three years, and we keep all of the three thousand gallon tanks, we have three of them right now, and back in nineteen, that was a value of seventy-five hundred bucks that they paid for. Um, when I went on to Safe Bind's website, it was forty-one hundred bucks for just a one tank, and like ten feet of hose. I wrote it down right here, we have too many papers, yeah. A hose kit, three thousand gallon tank, and an agitator, it was forty-one hundred bucks. That's one tank, so if we switch to them, we would have to buy tanks, because Innovative will come get their tanks. Um, another thing that we have from Innovative is, if we had a really cold winter where salt doesn't work, we can use that magnesium to treat our salt, so I have an applicator from them that we can actually spray onto our salt to, you know, treat it like treated salt. It hasn't really been cold enough to use it, like when it gets down to like negative ten, and, you know, for a while, or salt just doesn't work, but it snows, treated salt would work better, but we haven't had to, it's been such a warm winters. Um, and I also have a spare thousand gallon tank with a spray system on it from Innovative, and they, um, supply that, and it's actually, has a valve on it, that electric valve, and that valve went, and they were over, they came right over in a day and replaced it, and I just use that as backup, because we have the, the town's chloride truck too, but I, I think it's, what they offer, I just, I think I would like to keep going with them.
With Innovative?
With Innovative. I did, I did like the way this product worked, I'm not gonna disagree with you at all, that, I just, for the, I don't know how I want to word it, but for us, I think this is working right now.
Okay.
Maybe in a couple of years, maybe we have, maybe we budget to do something different. Um, these guys are out of Albany, well, I'm not, I just say Albany, it's easier. I call for a load, it's there the next day. I talked with this guy and the trucking companies in Worcester, and they, they don't even have their own trucks, or Innovative has all their own trucks, so it's like.
Yep.
I just think this is working right now.
Okay.
It's not broke, don't fix it.
Well, and.
And I'm not against trying new things, I really like trying new things.
Um, so, we probably ought to have a motion, so we can discuss, okay? So, a motion might be to have him sign a three-year contract, or maybe even, we'll discuss maybe a lesser year contract, but before we discuss, why don't we have a motion, one way or the other, okay?
I'll make a motion if we, uh, continue on with the current contract for road treatment.
For three years?
For three years.
So, I check it.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a second, Tony and, and Joe, uh, now discussion.
So, that's just as corrosive, or?
No.
No?
No. It isn't.
Lignosulphenate?
I'm told it is, because there is.
Okay.
I'm told that because there is calcium chloride in this.
I, I looked, I looked at the MSDS sheet on lignosulphenate.
Yep.
And China's like the huge supplier of it, and if you look at the MSDS online.
Okay.
Any of the like things that are pertinent to your health, or any kind of a risk thing, the information's not available.
Wow.
Why isn't it? I mean, the whole thing's like, not available, not available. Why isn't it? I mean, the whole thing is like, not available, not available, you know?
The color makes me nervous.
But...
Just with...
It looked, it, it was different.
Yeah.
It was brown.
I just was, I'd be afraid, uh, people would get worried. That was the only thing, but...
Okay.
Cause it was brown?
Yeah, the road...
It, it was brown.
Yeah, and I, you know, some of the, a couple of people asked me, and I said, well, we're using a wood product.
Yeah.
And that, that's why it's that color. Um, they were, we're just testing it out.
Yeah.
But even though the MSDS wouldn't say anything about whatever, but what, what it did say is if you've got it in your eyes, flush your eyes up for fifteen minutes, cool water, and go seek medical attention. If you inhale it, same thing, seek medical attention. But when they say inhale, they mean by long periods of time. They're not saying, you know, driving your car down the road, you got a whiff of it. But there are, apparently there is some, something going on with it. I mean, I, I didn't have enough time to really dig deeper into it, but if you go online, just look up lignosulphenate and go to the M, it'll, the MDS, MSDS sheet, it'll, it'll come right up. You just click on it, it'll bring you right to Rose's app.
Another thing I noticed, too, with it was the way it stuck to the truck versus the way this sticks to the truck. This was a lot harder to clean. We do wa, we do rinse that truck off every time we spray.
But the same thing can be said for once it's on the ground. It's, it sticks to the ground.
Yeah. No, I...
Yep, okay.
I mean... I think it's something we can look into, but right now, I think we just, we go with this.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
I feel good about Innovative.
Yep. Yeah.
I feel like it has been working on our roads, too, though, I mean...
Well, the advantage to, to using the, uh, calcium chloride in the salt, because if you ever get it, and you let it build up with ice in the winter, and you have a lot bigger problem than if you keep it up to start with.
Yeah, you're saying, if the salt stops working, make sure you use it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, cause then you're just wasting the salt.
Oh, yeah, because, I mean, you get down much below ten degrees, and the further you go below ten degrees, the less salt works.
Well, last, last year...
Unless you got some help with it.
Um, this Innovative, I don't know, I guess I would say he was the salesman, but he's, he called me, and he said, how much you got in your tanks? And I said, well, they're practically full. He goes, oh, well, you're gonna have to winterize them. And I was like, what do you mean, winterize them? And he's like, oh, you're gonna have to add water to them. Something like, huh, how many? So, I told him how many gallons are in each tank. He's like, well, this one needs five hundred gallons of water. This one needs three hundred gallons. I said, well, that's not gonna be easy. So, the fire department came over and filled them for me.
Nice.
Yeah, that was...
So, you don't want them, you don't want them full in the fall time, then, do you?
No, I was looking at them today, they're full. But no, there's room for water.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, carry, five zero zero. So, you, you'll sign, you'll sign, or somebody will sign the...
Yeah, have him send the contract to me.
He told me that we should see it within the next month.
Okay. Have, have the auction guy forward me the stuff, too.
Yeah, I told him once, I got approved, I would.
Okay.
What's the contract cost this for the next three? Is it significantly higher, same price, what's...
Um, our quote right now is to this, the end of this month, so we'll see something. But he said there wasn't gonna be much, uh...
I know everything's going up, that's why I'm...
So, the way that it works is that eighty-four cents a gallon is worked into, you know, everything.
So, there's no upfront cost?
No upfront cost.
We just pay for the chloride we get?
Yes. And you have to use a certain amount of chloride, but there's, we do that very easily.
Yep.
Well, in New York, it does it pretty easily.
Yeah.
Uh, any other, anything else, uh, any projects coming up, or any, we're all set on that?
Just some regular maintenance, getting ready for winter. We've done plows and stuff on trucks and few wells and ends, but no big projects coming up.
What's the schedule for putting a truck on order?
Uh, my next thing, I'll give you the dates tomorrow. Uh, we'll be in here November first with the bid documents. We'll have, the bids have to be submitted by December... Where did I write that down? Well, I wrote it down somewhere. Uh, the bids will be due December sixth, they'll be awarded December twentieth for delivery between July and September of twenty twenty-two. Because it has to go to July, because we need the money in the next budget.
There's no question that one...
Yeah, there's no question. It's gonna get it before then, anyway, but...
Um, and talking with, well, that was before they sold, but talking with Delory, like, he said that if the truck was somehow built in March, you know, it's no big deal if it had to be held till someone sells it.
Yeah.
It was never gonna happen.
No. And that's just the truck itself, or are you...
No, I...
You ordered...
We, uh, bid them together.
You ordered, you ordered a package?
Through a dealer.
Through a dealer.
Yeah, and they, they supply the bid for the truck and the bid for the plow equipment. And I just, I have it all done, I just gotta...
Yeah, that's the way we did the last one. I'm all in favor of doing that, rather than, when I got here, we were getting bodies, we were getting chassis, and then getting bodies and plows from all over the place, and it was just...
Well, when the truck gets, like, this one, it didn't even go to Delory's. It went to Viking.
Yeah.
Got all built. We picked it up, and then, uh, ended up needing it. But we brought it to Delory's, and then they did their check and everything through it.
Do you specify, do you speci, specify Viking as a supplier, or do you let them go wherever they can?
Um, I didn't on the last one, but I don't think, I really wanted to do that.
Not everybody's happy with Viking, with, with the company, I don't know. I think the product...
The product is good, I think.
Yeah, excellent, isn't it?
Yeah, the product is good, I think, yeah. I know what you're saying. No, I'm not opposed to going with Everest, or Tenko, or Viking. The only thing about, if we go with Viking, we have, all our trucks are Viking now, so like...
Got some pull.
The plows are, you know, interchangeable.
Yep.
If we need to use somewhere, we need to use someone else's plow, they can.
That's a good point.
Yeah, like the candy canes for Viking, because, well, right now we have three, one, two, three Vikings and Everest, which is, that'd be the truck we'd be trading in, and then that, um, truck we bought from North Bennington is a Tenko. Actually, the Tenko fits into the Vikings, the Everest doesn't. The candy canes are shorter, or narrower and longer, one of them is shorter, one of them is something, but, yeah.
Okay, well...
No, I don't specify anything. They get the bids, and as long as it meets what we write...
Yep.
It's fine.
Okay.
The dump body's stainless, right?
Put the stainless in.
Yep.
Cause not doing it as an option this time, doing it as a requirement.
It should be.
I like, that stainless body that we have on that truck is fine.
No, it's just the maintenance on them are just so much better, or lack thereof.
I mean, it was twenty-seven hundred bucks, I mean, that was two years ago, but it's twenty-seven hundred bucks more.
Think we're gonna be shocked at what this one's gonna cost.
I think so, too.
The steel is up terrible.
Well, unfortunately, we have twenty-seven thousand dollars in credits, uh, because not enough people, uh, for the, uh, class action suit that we, we're party to, that we, uh, got a discount on our last truck. Apparently, everyone eligible for that, uh, settlement didn't put in paperwork for it. So, we're getting three more rounds of that settlement, so...
For three different trucks?
No, all for one. We can use it all for one, so... And like Art said, right now, that might just have all been absorbed in the increase in sales, in the steel prices, but it's there.
Okay.
Well, let's get it rolling then.
Yep.
Anybody else got any questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You can't.
Walk in front of the county, you've been in front of it all along.
Okay, um, there, we have to, do we have to approve this, or just let everybody know that there is a schedule?
Oh, the bylaw adoption schedule, yeah, this is just more an announcement for, and the town, and for the board to be aware. Um, the planning commission has some new draft bylaws. Well, the bigger ones is, uh, kennels in all zoning districts in town, except for Village Center, I believe it is, and Forest and Rec, and also a change to the boundary line adjustment. Those would be the two major ones. So, what's gonna happen is, I'll distribute all the changes to the board, and on the first meeting for the board, which will be, uh, November first, the board will review it, and they move to, you'll move to have a hearing, which will then be on December sixth. And if the board makes any substantial changes to any of the, uh, proposed regulations, we'll have to schedule a second hearing, which would then take place, uh, around January third.
So, what happens on the first? They, they come in and present to us what they've...
Yeah, we'll arrange for them to be there. You all have read it, so you can ask questions, and then if you need, want to revise it, uh...
And, and then on the sixth, we have the public coming in? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, that would be to hold a public hearing, because you have, they've held public hearings, and the select board has to hold a public hearing.
Yep, okay.
And then unless something comes up, that would really be the end of it. Then we would just move it to the ballot.
Okay.
So, this is kinda more informational on tonight's budget, that this is going on, and that, uh, we're moving forward with it.
Okay, so, there was a, there was a schedule in your things, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Transfer Station, we, uh, approved a whole big, long list of things, and now there was a mistake, or...
Yeah, well, I was over anxious to collect fees. Um, when I went back and reviewed it with, with Shelley and Greg, um, I made an error in, where they collected, what was item sixty-six and seventy-seven furniture and sofa beds, uh, that I thought we would still collect. Uh, that was always put in with C and D. So, when I presented this to them, they said, well, are we getting a new container? And I was like, oh, uh, that over, missed, missed that when they were talking to me the first time. So, we're asking that out. They've already been telling people to take it all to, uh, Casella and Sunderland or Bennington, so it can be weighed there, and they can collect the proper amount. So, what I'm proposing is we just eliminate sixty-six furniture and seventy-seven and seventy-eight, which is sofa beds, on the list, because it's already going to Bennington. We have no way of weighing it, and now we don't even have a container for it.
Okay, sixty-six?
Seventy-seven and seventy-eight.
Seventy-seven and seventy-eight. I think we gotta have a motion on this.
Yes, because, I am, it's an amending to the, uh, to the rate schedule.
So moved. Check it.
We have a motion in a second by Tony and, and Ken, that we remove on the schedule of, of payments, is that right?
The rate schedule for the transportation.
We remove sixty-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight, which is, um, addresses sofas with and without frames, and so on and so forth.
And furniture, all furniture.
And furniture, which means it'll, they'll have to go to...
To Bennington or Sunderland, Casella facilities, where they have scales, and they can be properly weighed.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I gotta get it dried out.
So, do we have a motion in a second? Any discussion on any of this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, carry, five zero zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Wonder if there's a way you could probably get people to send out their couches and chairs that they don't want to San Francisco, where all the homeless people are. They ain't got nothing to send, and they lay in the ground all day.
The problem I find with old furniture is you're gonna worry about bedbugs now.
You don't care about that.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, that's a huge problem.
You choose yourself up, you won't care about none of that.
Yeah.
Just ask those guys.
Okay, uh...
Anyway.
Other business? Anybody else have any other comments?
Uh, better close Cleveland Avenue for Halloween, or no?
Good question.
Yes. Thank you, Ken.
Have they asked us?
No, well, we always just decide. I mean, there's no one to ask, it just kinda happens.
Okay.
The one thing I was trying to clarify, uh, was what date is actually Halloween? Halloween is Sunday.
Sunday, the thirty-first.
But I'm told that in Shansbury, Halloween is Halloween, and it's on the day it falls on. So, Sunday is when we should have it closed.
Right.
I know that North Bennington is having their Halloween parade, that, where they march through town on Sunday, the thirty-first.
Okay, well, then I'll arrange the sheriffs and, uh, the boards to pass the resolution to close Cleveland Avenue from six to nine P.M. on, uh, this, December thirty-first.
Alright.
I don't fool people, October thirty-first.
We're gonna have a big news.
Yeah.
We should do a parade. You're in Shansbury, gotta be back to...
I'm organizing. You live on Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah, but I'm not getting any good at that stuff, Tony.
Yeah.
Not as good as you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do need a motion, uh, both for to close the road and to hire the, uh, the three sheriffs we have been hiring.
How many, three?
Three, one for each, you know, such, because if the crowd shows up, it's so many people.
Yeah.
You know, it is.
Okay. So, entertain a motion to close Cleveland Avenue and hire three sheriffs for, uh, October thirty-first Halloween.
So moved.
From six to nine.
Second?
Ken, Joe, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry five zero zero.
Okay.
Other business? Action items. Was there anything that had, that was...
We will start the auction paperwork. We will do the paperwork, um, for Mike, so that he can start, uh, writing to people about the roadways.
Yep, right aways, yep.
And we will do the, uh, when I get the contract, I'll sign it for the lignosulfate.
Or for the cal...
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, we just voted not to do that. Yes, sorry.
Magnesium sulfate.
Magnesium sulfate.
You're gonna, you're gonna let the, let the sheriffs know that we're gonna need three people?
Yeah, I'll, uh, put it on their, their page tomorrow.
Okay.
And that's, we haven't had a problem with that yet, so... But even if we, if we wind up with two, one can just check either end of Cleveland. Be interesting, you know, see how many people come out on the thirty-first, but that won't be bad.
Um, to har, to ask the fire department, that doesn't work, is that right?
Uh, no.
They don't really have the authority if it's not a fire, is that the way it goes?
Uh, I don't, I believe that's correct. They had always been doing it.
Yeah.
And then, uh, what, six years ago, uh, they went down to like one person, and, and he couldn't do it that day. And it just turned out that there's a real, uh, jurisdictional question of what authority do they have to do this?
Financial, yeah.
Because it isn't a fire scene. The fire police are really dedicated to a fire scene. And, you know, one year we had the DPW on the corner, this, no one showed up. Uh, so it's just better to have sher, even one sheriff just controlling the entrance to Cleveland would, would be better than nothing.